Members of the council, the first order business this evening is the adoption of the council minutes of September 14th, 2009. Moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Maves. Any comments or questions before I move the motion? Yes, councillor Wang?
Just a couple of very minor corrections. On the first page, my conflict is actually an employment relationship rather than a business relationship. And on the second page, Ruth Redman's name is spelled incorrectly in one instance.
Thank you very much. We have to call the motion then, please, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. This time I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councillor Maves?
Yes, check number 331223, Ontario Motor Coach. That was an event I attended.
Thank you, so noted. Councillor Einoni?
Thank you, check 331206, it's my AMO reimbursement.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to declare conflicts on check numbers 330820, 330928, and 331254 payable to myself as well. Move on to deputations, and this evening, members of council, we have some congratulations to extend. The first one is to the Niagara Falls Thundercats Squirt softball team, who are provincial champions. On Sunday, August 16th, a group of 10 and 11-year-old girls became the first team from the Niagara Girls Minor Softball League to win a provincial championship. The championship games were played in Brampton, Ontario. The team qualified for the provincial championships by placing second in the qualifiers held in Niagara Falls in July. In Brampton, the team won every game they played to take home the gold medal. They beat Stratford and Vaughan, and then Mississauga Southwest in the semifinals before beating out the Oakridges Diamonds 8-5 in the final. After the regulation innings, the score was tied 5-5, then Niagara Falls scored three more runs at the top of the first extra inning to shout out Oakridges in the bottom of the eighth inning. Congratulations to the provincial champions, the Niagara Falls Thundercats Squirt softball team. And we have with us the team members today, we're going to be presenting a plaque to them. We have coaches Amy Taylor, and Tammy Blake, and Bernie Scott. So I'd ask the coaches to come forward, please, if they would. Now, the team members, I'm going to call them at one of the times we can. We have Charlie Scott. Congratulations, Charlie. The second we have is Caitlin Gunther. There is Charlie Carr. Amy Seagin. Is it a runner? Wow, congratulations. Okay, move on to Sidney Taylor. Sheila Nenpon. This is for Marcy Scott, and she's up. Marcy Scott?
She's a team manager.
Okay, she's a team manager. Can I invite one of the coaches to make comments, please?
Sure. Thank you to city council for appreciating the work, that hard work that these girls have played all year. They worked really hard from the beginning of our season, which started in January, right up to the end, when we finished in August. And they worked their hearts out, and they definitely deserve, and they earned this great accomplishment. Congratulations to them.
The members of council, and your coaches as well, we offer you our thanks, our congratulations. Certainly you've made us proud here in Niagara Falls, being the first in your history of your league to earn such a designation and achievement. So congratulations, we're very proud of you, thank you for coming. The members of council, we have another presentation this evening as well. The Niagara Falls Minor Peewee Falcons A baseball team, provincial champions, won the Ontario Baseball Championship, Peewee A Division Championship on Labor Day weekend in Niagara Falls. The team, a group of 12-year-old boys, went undefeated through the tournament and beat Royal York in Toronto 12-3 in the championship game. Most of the team began playing together three years ago as a mosquito team. A talented team of boys, they had to learn to lose to realize what it takes to win. And this year, the knowledge in the game matched their talent, and together made for a very successful season. It began by winning a 20-team tournament in St. Thomas, where Niagara Falls defeated a heavily favored Cambridge team in extra innings for the championship game. Next, they won the tournament which they hosted. It was a very busy summer for the boys. They played in the Niagara District League, as well as the United States Boys of Summer League, where they represented Niagara Falls and Canada very well, ending up with a 14-1 record. And baseball took up both of the weekends and a good part of the week. According to head coach John Hiltz, every boy in the team contributed throughout the year, and the team was highlighted with a great pitching and great defense. And besides being very talented athletes, these boys are fantastic kids, and were great representatives for the city of Niagara Falls. The entire coaching staff and all the parents are very proud of each boy, and the players here are listed with us today. I'm going to call forward, if I may, the coach, head coach John Hiltz, assistant coach Bob Peicher, Darren Schmal, and John Morris. Are they all with us? If they're not, they'll come forward. I could ask the players to come forward, please. First of all, we have Jared Shipman. And to the head coach, John Hiltz. Last one, and this goes to Bob Peicher. Which one did you comment?
On behalf of the boys and the parents, I just want to thank council for taking the time to recognize the boys, that as the other team stated, the kids work very, very hard, and they are excellent representatives for the city of Niagara Falls. Thank you very much, thank you to the parents, it was a long summer, and thank you for bringing them to practice, bringing them to games, and a very successful year, and thank you very much again. Bob?
Just on behalf of the Minor Peewee Falcons, Greater Niagara Baseball Association, I'd like to thank you for coming up to one of the first pitch in May. I know that we gave you a travel jersey with your name on the back of it. Our sponsor this year was the Jack and Sandler, and just to give you a hint of what we did in our accomplishments this year, we had the summer of 2009 with the excellent year that we had on there, and something that you'll be champion of for yourself.
Thank you very much, Bob, you're very kind, thank you. For the team members who had a long season, to the parents, certainly I know you support your children very well, the fact that you travel extensively to the coaches for your dedication and your commitment, we've got a first-class league in Niagara Falls, the council is very proud of you again, and thank you again for representing our city very well. Congratulations. care. And this evening Valerie Williams will, excuse me, Valerie Williams will inform council of an upcoming meeting explaining the need for hospice palliative care in the Niagara region. I'd like to call forward, if I may, Mrs. Valerie Williams. Valerie, would you come forward, please? Are you Valerie Williams? Great. Are you gun-shy?
Sorry?
Are you gun-shy?
No, no, I'm not shy. I come from a line of actress, so if I was shy, I'd be ashamed of myself.
Community, welcome.
My son was a hockey player. Am I supposed to talk to him here? Can you hear me?
A little louder, please.
My son was a hockey player, and he never had such a wonderful reception as this. But he's 50 now, and he's in San Francisco, and he's a referee, so he's having to sort out the fights, okay? As you know, I'm here talking about hospice and palliative care. Did everybody get my flyer?
Yes.
And did you read my little wee story?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I'm a Londoner, but my husband's a Welshman, was a Welshman, and we met in London. My son told me to tell you that we met in bed. He was the patient and I was the nurse, he said, a little like that. But anyhow, we came to Canada in 58, and I'm a nurse, nursery nurse and a midwife, and I, we took talk courses in creative problem solving, so consequently, I'm always trying to meet the needs of the situation. And after my husband died last summer, I was lying in bed at 3:00 in the morning, he was always keen to, for us to learn. I have to lean over an awful long way, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Getting hot. And about 3:00 in the morning, I don't know if it's David and God, or both of them, said you can do it, so get cracking and do it. So I've done it, and for the past year, I've been studying the situation with hospice and palliative care, because David died in McNally House, which was absolutely superb compared to being in a hospital bed. And I felt, why not, and I put it at the bottom, that's my vision, why not a hospice in every town that needs one? Now, the government have told me that we don't need one here. However, in my research, apparently there are half a million people in the Niagara region, and there are about 20 hospice beds, but most people, another bit of research I've done, die in hospital, which is $1,000 a night, but in a hospice, it's only $300. So I'm kind of wondering how these figures are gelling with the government, obviously they're not. Anyhow, I've been to Montreal, to the place where Cecily Saunders visited about 35 years ago, maybe more, and she got Dr. Balfour Mount very interested in this concept of dying with dignity, and he got it started in Montreal. I think we had people come from here, this is before I was aware of it, I was busy looking after my children at the time, and we had, we did have a very good program going here in our hospital, I understand. Anyhow, I've also, I went on the floor there, it was absolutely wonderful, they'd made a complete room for the family, they'd even had a wedding there, they had a mobile whirlpool bath, which I thought was wonderful. I'm a swimmer, and I'd love to be in a bath before I die. But anyhow, then I went to Windsor, and I went through a hospice there, and also, I've got some information here on the hospice in Ottawa. So I decided, or to begin with, the government weren't particularly interested in me because they felt that I was newly bereaved last summer. However, my husband had Alzheimer's, so I had been grieving him for about four years. He was a very bright guy, and he ended up, sort of, he always knew me, thank God, that was lovely. And he, in fact, he even told me I was intelligent before he died. I thought, that was very sweet of him, but I wish he'd thought of that when he was giving me shit, because I couldn't spell. And, I mean, he had a good education, but I grew up in wartime Britain and went to 10 different schools. My mother died when I was only 10. I'm getting off track now, but anyhow, I do that all the time. I've got it written down here somewhere. Somebody blow the whistle if I go over 10 minutes, okay? Oh, yeah. So I didn't let the government know too much, because they didn't want me to, they didn't really, I don't think they wanted. So I got cracking, and I did a year's work, I produced that flyer, I sent them one, and then they said, oh! And the next thing I knew, I was called Valerie Williams, a consumer stakeholder, and they put me on this. So if you'd like to hand these around, I've suddenly been promoted in the eyes of the government, and they want me to be their consumer stakeholder. I nearly brought a steak with me, so that I could say, here's the steak, and I'm the holder, but I thought perhaps that was a bit too much. Now, any questions?
Well, Mrs. Williams, just to promote the idea that you are having a meeting on September 29th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Victoria Avenue Library?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, and you'll have a presentation, so we do, we have circulated this, and we're letting people know who are watching this evening, that it'll be with regard to the hospice palliative care, and we have the information, so would you like to add any more? You have some speakers coming tomorrow, Dr. Denise Marshall?
She isn't coming, unfortunately, she won't be there. Julie Darnay, she's the director of the Hospice and Palliative Care Network.
Good. And Diane Reed, correct?
She will be there, yes. So the idea is that we want the people of Niagara Falls to join with us, because the government certainly isn't going to build a hospice, it'll be up to us.
Yes.
You can build a really grand one for $2.7 million, or you can, in New Brunswick, they built one for $1.7 million, so it's a case of being, coming together as a community and saying, yes, we want one.
So hopefully we'll encourage residents to come tomorrow to support the cause and to learn more about palliative care. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mrs. Williams? Yes, councillor Kerrio?
Well, your worship, there's another one on Thursday, October 8th, did you mention that?
No, I didn't, actually, we should mention, thank you for bringing it to my attention. Thursday, October 8th, 2009, Northland Point at Twofielden Avenue in Port Colborne as well, so you'll be attending that as well, Dr. Nadle?
I jumped ahead of them. When they discovered what I had, they said, oh, wait a minute, we're having one in October. So I thought, David used to say to me, don't go too far ahead of the crowd, otherwise you become the quarry. So I've got to keep myself covered, so that I'm not the quarry. But anyhow, she covered it by taking me on board.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mrs. Williams?
Any more questions, anybody?
If not, thank you very much, Mrs. Williams, and hopefully we can attend that tomorrow as well, as scheduled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Move on to the next deputation this evening as well, with regard to the GNGH emergency room. Dr. Dobroloskis will speak to the issue of the emergency room at the Greater Niagara General Hospital. Yes, councillor Einoni?
Actually, Mr. Ryan, I know we have a 10-minute limit on deputations, but I'd like the indulgence of council that we extend the 10-minute limit for Dr. Paul, because I can just anticipate that there'll be a lot of questions in his presentation, and a number of things that he's going to read out to council that we don't have knowledge of.
Okay.
So I'd like to extend the 10-minute.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Einoni, seconded by councillor Deodati. You've heard the comments, questions yet? No? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, welcome, doctor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Salcy, it's a pleasure being tonight. Jim, thank you very much for inviting me. Mayor Salcy, I wanted to start off with just a brief description of the NHS, or sorry, the GNG Emergency Department. The longest-serving member is going on 27 years continuous. I'm one of the junior guys at 14 years still. That's a long, long time. This has been one of the most stable departments in Ontario, and that's a record that's enviable. As you know, and you had a letter circulated round to you, I resigned my privileges, and that has been accepted by GNGH and the NHS as of October 1. I had made public my letter, which I've been asked to read to you, just so that it goes on the record. The Greater Niagara General Hospital Emergency Physician Group has been one of the most constant reliable groups in Canadian emergency services, provide a dedicated and quality care for the citizens of Niagara region for over 25 years. We have been the distinction in Niagara region of having the lowest wait times, best patient satisfaction rates, and service to the citizens of Niagara. Our physicians have been dedicated in providing the Niagara community with specialized services, such as a regional stroke treatment center, the regional chemical, biological disaster decontamination unit, the site of the base hospital program, which provides advice and training to paramedics in the region, as well as providing charitable medical services in the third world. Our doctors have traveled to South America with our nurses to provide services on that basis. The emergency department handles more patients than any other emergency department in the region, with one of the most experienced and longest-serving groups in Niagara. The emergency physicians in Niagara have long ties to the community, and serve the community with pride, ensuring the best possible emergency care for the patients of this growing region. Despite this, the department has been under constant attack by its own administration on a professional and personal level. The agenda of the NHS administration to us is unclear, even after token dismissal of the former chief of staff, and the promise of transparency, accountability, and cooperation with the medical staff, the NHS has only become more entrenched in a restructuring plan that is covert, and kept hidden from the public, as well as staff of the NHS. that is covert and kept hidden from the public, as well as staff of the NHS. Over the last one and a half years, the NHS has kept a private-for-profit physician temporary agency on retainer, this at the cost of twenty thousand dollars per month. This company would provide physicians at significant cost to the NHS to replace current emergency physicians in the event the physicians would not comply with NHS restructuring. During the same time, the emergency doctors of GNGH have been frustrated by bed closures, cuts to nursing and practical nursing staff, sudden and unexplained closure of services such as pediatrics, obstetrics, and mental health without warning or explanation. The GNGH is dying a slow death by cuts that will transfer the bulk of services away from our hospital and the people it serves to other facilities and locations that do not serve this community's interests. The latest blow to the emergency department physicians is the demand to dismantle a stable schedule for our emergency doctors and bring in contract physicians by September fifteenth, two thousand and nine. This despite no proof of benefit and a great cost to the region. The real issues of bed and nursing staff shortages are being ignored. Staffing more physicians per shift might appear to reduce wait times in the emergency department, but in practice will not be effective. The long wait times do not currently result from the number of available doctors, but are due to the number of patients that are held in the emergency department waiting for beds to be admitted into. The staffing model in use by the emergency physicians that provided stability in emergency room physician coverage unrivaled in the region and continuity of care. Over the past years, the NHS administration has cut nurses and closed beds, increasing patient wait times. Adding more doctors does not solve this unless additional beds and nursing support are also made available. And I nearly stressed that. Unless we get these support services in place, it becomes a bottleneck. The emergency physicians have been given an ultimatum to sign on to the new model or leave and be replaced by temporary agency doctors. Agency doctors and their private-for-profit company are guaranteed payments and top-ups. There's little incentive for them to reduce patient wait times. The current physicians do not bill the NHS. We have no top-ups. We are not paid any supplemental salaries. They build the Ministry of Health only for the services they provide, no service charges or administrative costs, and create no extra financial burden for the regional healthcare budget. We're also faced with uncertainty as to what kind of hospital Greater Niagara General will be in the next months. Unexpected closures of pediatrics, obstetrics, and gynecology, and psychiatry have left emergency physicians scrambling to find places for their patients in other hospitals far from their homes in Niagara. With other reductions in patient services, well, sorry, with other reductions in services, patients languish in structures in the emergency room often for days and to help reduce the burgeoning one hundred and ten million dollar deficit of the NHS. Despite our long record of service to the community, our record of performance above the benchmarks within the Niagara Health System, the lowest level of complaints and the shortest wait times and the dedication of the emergency physicians with Greater Niagara Hospital, the Niagara Health System administration appears committed to the dismantling of our hospital emergency department. After careful discussion, we feel we can no longer partner with the NHS and have lost confidence in the leadership of the emergency department and overall administration of the Niagara Health System. With great sadness and frustration, we announced we can no longer participate in providing scheduled coverage of the emergency department of the Greater Niagara General Hospital as of eight AM on the first of October, two thousand and nine. We'll provide full coverage until then and have offered to assist in providing services to the community by covering some shifts for a transition period to fill the voids left by our departure. We realize the impact this will have on the quality of care in the region, the potential loss of the stroke treatment program, chemical, biological disaster decontamination unit, as well as community participation we have enjoyed, but we feel we have no other option. We wish as a group to express our thanks and deepest sentiments to our nurses, fellow physicians, and community that have strived to build this hospital into the bright light of the NHS and support us over these many decades with deepest regrets. Now, thank you very much for listening to that, because I'm sure you've read it all. We haven't gone into this, I guess melee with the Niagara Health System without trying to compromise. Over the last month and a half, Dr. Monkley came back as chief of our emergency department and brought forth a grand total of eleven proposals. These have been completely rejected by the NHS. And I just want to go through some of them. We have our own site emergency department chief selected from within our group. We want written assurances through a memorandum of understanding signed by administration that there will be no reduction in the, at the GNGH site of specialty coverage or in-hospital availability of obstetrics, pediatrics, the maternal-child program, mental health services, and general surgery prior to the opening of the new hospital in St. Caphrin's in two thousand and twelve. There will be no further cuts to nursing, diagnostic services, or support services to the emergency department at the GNG site. An intensive recruiting campaign will be initiated immediately for emergency physicians at the GNG site. This will be dependent on getting agreement with prior. That members of the GNG Emergency Department input into the recruiting and selection process of their medical colleagues. We like people who get along and work well in our department and can function well. That Medemerge and Health Force Ontario physicians be used only as a last resort for temporary site emergency department coverage. That Medemerge and Health Force Ontario physicians be used only as a first, on a first-call coverage, not to provide double coverage unless all first-call shifts are covered in a given month. That medical directives, these are the instructions that are given to nurses, be reviewed and a process to modify them be initiated by September twenty-third. Physicians currently working first call in the emergency department will have first choice of shifts on a month-to-month basis. That lack of in-hospital resources resulting in admitted patients overcrowding the emergency department urgently be dealt with by the NHS administration. All these points were rejected. All these points were not even brought up to discussion with the members of our department. And that, to me, is an incredibly sad feature of what's going on today. That we are trying to negotiate a better way for Niagara. We have only used what means we have to get their attention. It's not working. The department here has been one of the most stable departments in Ontario. You will not find an emergency department with this longevity. We've been criticized the fact that the department has no sustainability. Yet we had a full schedule drawn up to Christmas. And that schedule is self-perpetuating. It runs on a repeating cycle. That has been there for the last twenty-five years, the cycling pattern of the schedule. We agreed to modify the schedule to bring in extra physicians, but we need the resources in our community to move patients through the department. We need nurses. We need beds. Now, I'm making, it sounds like I'm making the NHS out as a bad guy, and to some extent I am, but I realize the stresses they're under. We are one of the lowest-funded hospital systems in Ontario. We don't get the money we need. That's a provincial responsibility. But we also need to commit ourselves to the resources, the people that we have here and utilize them fully. We can't go taking apart things that are working well and replacing them with unknowns because we have a study. Well, we've got lots of studies. You may have read the Dubinsky report, which was an independent review of our department. There were three of those. One suggested that our volumes were going to fall off. One suggested that our volumes were going to go up. They never got the same story twice. Power Study, which was quoted in Dr. Dubinsky's study, I think you all may have a copy of it, indicated that the model that we use is one of the most efficient models of healthcare resources and that we fit the pattern of the other nineteen fee-for-service hospitals in Ontario. We're well within the parameters of those hospitals. This was rejected on the basis that the study was unpublished. Well, it was published in the Journal of Emergency Medicine in the United States just recently and was accepted. We have a good working model. We have good physicians, and I believe everybody in the NHS is trying to do the best they can. But I think we all need to really have a good, hard look at what we want in this community, what's going to happen when the hospital is no longer the place we know today. Is that really what we see as the most viable option for Niagara, the only growing community in the region right now? Is that what you want? And that's what you have to decide and be willing to take a stand on. And that's what we, as the emergency physicians, have. We believe in this hospital. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. I'll gladly entertain any questions that I can answer.
Now, Dr. Paul, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions first. I know there are some questions from council. Have you had a chance to express your frustration to the chief of staff?
The chief of staff is well aware of our frustration. In fact, Dr. Monkley was appointed by the chief of staff to bring our points forward.
And can you inform this council what kind of response you got?
There have been times where we really don't see much back from Dr. Hope. Now, again, things have been a closet negotiation. There's not a lot of transparency, so we haven't seen things. But all of the eleven, all of the points that we had mentioned were rejected. And that's all as far as we know at this point. We've been told that it's time for us to move on with the program and move forward. And that's the only response we've gotten from NHS. And that was in a letter from Ms. Sevenpiper to us that it's time to just put everything aside and move forward.
So Dr. Hope is the new chief of staff. She did not meet with you at all?
Dr. Hope has not met with us as a group, no.
And have you had a chance to convey this to our Member of Provincial Parliament?
I have conveyed all of this to Mr. Crater, our Member of Provincial Parliament.
Any response?
I will leave that to Mr. Crater to delineate response. He's aware of the situation, and I can, I can't speak for him, Mayor. That would be unfair for me.
You know, we are hearing stories and we've had complaints at this chamber from both councillors and the public about the delays. And I know that you've been very busy. Our emergency room is a newly rebuilt facility. I know that you have a capacity for about sixty-five thousand patients. You see almost sixty thousand patients a year, I believe, between fifty-six and sixty thousand patients. So obviously, you're very busy. I'm just wondering, is there anything else you can offer us as to any further recommendations that we could do as a council to carry forward the message?
Provincial healthcare, or healthcare is a provincial responsibility.
Right.
But we need a stronger voice in Niagara that's going to be talking to the province and let them know what, how important this community is. This is the star of the Niagara region. I'm sorry to say, I don't mean it as a derogatory term to any other community because they're all wonderful communities. But this community has shown growth and has shown potential, and it needs a whole-service hospital. It needs it for the benefit of the citizens. It needs it for the benefit of the visitors. It needs it for the benefit of the police and fire department officials who work here. And we need council to stand up and say what they want in a hospital. If they're, if they're happy with moving things off and us becoming a center that only handles certain things and sending things off as a program-based model dictates, then so be it. But it's up to you to say what you want as a hospital. If I ask if anybody here has waited for hours with a family member sitting in the emergency department for days because we have been under resourced, this was a thing unknown to us three years ago. It was unknown, rare.
And, doctor, that seems to be the question that we get all the time. We can't seem to answer that. We don't seem to know the procedure at the hospital. Not that we'd be privileged to that, but that seems to be the key issue. And maybe you could address that. We'd like to have some answers. I'm sure that'd be some of the questions that we ask around the table tonight. We've had that concern about people waiting and waiting, and we don't know whether it's a backup or whether it's the triage system that's in place. If you could explain that, I'm sure that would help.
Issues have occurred with the design of the emergency department and its flow. That's a known statement. It's been quoted often in the studies. But the other issue is that of provincial funding. The province does not fund the emergency departments and the hospitals well enough anymore. It's expensive keeping someone in hospital and you've got to have them moved out. At our old hospital, we had a holding area. It doesn't exist anymore, but we're going to be redeveloping one. That idea is now resurfacing after being laid to rest three years ago. Beyond that, we need a commitment to have a clear plan, clarity, transparency, so that we know what we're dealing with. Right now, we don't. It's a complete shell game for us. You know, one day, we're going to have services, the next day, we're not. We don't know if we're going to have obstetrics, pediatrics by Christmas. We don't know if we're going to have psychiatry by then in this town, or we'll be shipping every patient out. So when you have that patient who is waiting in the waiting room forever, ask how many people have been admitted and are sitting in the emergency department, waiting for a bed, waiting for a place to go, waiting for a hospice to park themselves in, waiting for someplace where they can have their end of life in a decent compassionate environment, waiting for something, for the care that they need, not being sitting in a stretcher with a single curtain separating them. We find this almost, you know, I'll say it, offensive, that we have to treat people in this manner, but we don't have a choice. Now, the NHS is hamstrung on some of these things, but they do have power to realize that Niagara Falls is an important part of the NHS family.
And have they accepted your resignation, doctor?
Yes, they have.
Okay. All right. Well, we do have questions from members of council. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we are very sorry they accepted your resignation. I have been through a merge, you have treated me a number of times, and my family members. And quite frankly, I think...
Pardon? Oh, you just?
I just want to touch on a couple of things. You have some of the best nurses in Niagara.
Thank you.
And having sat in a merge and sat in holding for days and having been cared for by them, I'm in awe on how overworked, underpaid, and stressed out they are. And in regards to MPP Crater, MPP Crater is not here today because he was meeting with Minister Kaplan today. Because I did call and ask him why he wasn't, if he was going to attend, and he was not going to forego a meeting with the Minister of Health in regards to Fort Erie and the cuts that were being made here to be here at council. So I just wanted to highlight that. Second of all, how is the closure of the Fort Erie ER going to negatively impact the numbers that go through the Niagara Falls ER when you're all leaving?
I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you that. Right now, as you realize that emergency services has negotiated a contract to bring non-urgent patients to Fort Erie. This is the second time this has done, been done in the province where a non-hospital will receive ambulances. We're treading in the ground, which a lot of us don't really realize where we're going to at this point. It was tried in Toronto and failed. I don't know what plans the NHS has developed for this. We are concerned that we will be seeing far more patients in the region as we now currently provide surgical services, internal medical, medicine consults, psychiatry referral, a host of other services to the southern tier, where the bottleneck that Fort Erie comes up to when things are beyond the level of their care. So I would assume we are going to see an increase. But I can't give you a number to verify that. That will be told in the future.
Well, I want to congratulate you for coming here because we are very clear that the message is, "Don't talk." And if you're going to talk, you don't fit in here at GNGH. And the NHS is very strong on their repercussions. We've heard it from nurses. We've heard it from doctors. There's probably very few of us here who don't get the phone calls weekly. I think it's also, I want to really point out to you, when you say this council really needs to step up, we have sent resolution after resolution to the province. We have requested, I just wanted to show, we are so anti HIP that we couldn't get any more anti HIP. The plan is flawed. The plan is not funded. The plan is detrimental to Niagara Falls. We have asked to speak to the Minister of Transportation in regards to the lack of funds for transportation because they're not there. So we don't know how we're going to transport patients. He has declined. He will not speak to us. We have asked to speak to the Minister of Health. I think we've sent more resolutions than we can keep up with anymore. He also refuses to speak to us. We have what's called an annual Municipalities of Ontario Conference where they meet allegations from municipalities. We have asked to speak to the Minister of Health there. He's there meeting people, and he would not speak to us in regards to the HIP. We have tried every avenue we can, and this is my government, and they refuse to listen. I can understand them not listening to politicians, but I think it's terrifying and should be terrifying to the public that they won't listen to the doctors that are administering care to patients. We're not talking mechanics servicing cars. We're talking about doctors servicing patients and residents in Niagara Falls. Psychiatry, peds, and by the way, I'm Dr. Paul. They have told us that mid-July, we will find out whether peds and maternity are leaving, and it's only via the rumor mill that we understand they'll probably be gone by December. We haven't just been formally told either. What I find even more alarming is that while there's no sustainability, there's not even openness and transparency to the doctors who are providing the patient care to the patients. How are the docs going to do their job if the bureaucrats won't be truthful with the doctors? Like, I'm dumbfounded that, I'm dumbfounded that the twenty-seven-year veterans and yourself, those of you who've been there this long, have lasted this long under the HIP and the "don't talk" policy. I'm not sure what resolution you need from this council, but your suggestion that this hospital, this hospital has one of the lowest funding in the province, and you're the second-biggest, I think, in the province, if I'm not mistaken, with eight sites. Like, the funding formula alone is asinine, and I think we've sent a resolution to the province through our HIP committee asking that the funding formula be looked at too. So I don't want you to leave and think that we are not listening to you. We're the closest level of government the residents have, and we can't get the province to listen to the municipal politicians. So if you have some direction that you can give us or some suggestion you have for us, we will do it. You have three Members of Council that sit on the anti HIP committee, that's not what we call ourselves, but that's basically what it was, and very influential public people. And we've all spoke out against it. And tell us what we can do for you now. And just one more question. Are you adequately covered for October?
As of this point, I can only comment on the schedule that I have seen, and I've seen significant gaps in the schedule for October. seen significant gaps in the schedule for October. Now, that would be Ms. Sevenpipers and Dr. Hope's prerogative to provide you with further information on that. As you know, my resignation has been accepted, so I won't be privy to that information any longer.
Okay. Thank you. Councillors?
No, I'm going to reserve the right just to ask other questions as they go along.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that in 30-some-odd years of being involved in public life, I think you being here tonight is probably one of the most meaningful statements that I've seen. There's nothing more important than health and health coverage for the residents. And this committee chaired by Councillor Ianone have been working tirelessly for many months to attempt to overcome just exactly what you have been given to us tonight. All of the things were in the KITS report that this committee fought so hard against. Everything that you've said tonight, we knew was going to happen. The loss of peds, obstetrics, psychiatric, the underfunding, the cutbacks, that we were going to end up with a great emergency ward here and basically senior citizen hospital. This is what we were told at the time, what we fought against, and this council, with the exception, was constantly in favor of fighting against this. This was our objective, but it is so appropriate for you to be here tonight, because you are going to be the catalyst that makes everybody stand up and be counted with respect to this matter. This is, without exception, the most important issue that this council has dealt with in the last 30 years. The hospital in St. Catherine's, where it was told the site was chosen, the cousin was donated, all turned out to be false. All the information, the transparency and accountability was zero, and obviously, it's the same situation exists here tonight with what you're telling us. I hope that this is the opportunity to get the committee together again and to start another major fight, because we now know that everything we were fighting against has and will come to reality. So ladies and gentlemen, it's our responsibility. What do we want in this community? What kind of health care do we want? We were told what was coming with the KITS report, and it was ignored. So now it's our opportunity. And whatever we have to do, sir, and I really appreciate the view, standing up and being here. Very unusual, but appropriate for this time, and hopefully, we can utilize your comments here tonight to go back and fight and get the attention. I don't think we have to worry about our local member, but we certainly have to have the power and the ability to get to the powers that be at the provincial government, the premier, the minister, and we've attempted to deal with the people at the NHS and the LINS, and we've got zero cooperation and zero response that we wanted to hear. We have a really serious problem we have to deal with, and Councillor Ianone, you better call a meeting tomorrow morning. Let's go.
Councillor Fisher?
I have one thing, if I could, just a moment. I've worked in many of the hospitals in Southern Ontario, from Sunnybrook to the downtown teaching hospitals of Toronto. I'm on staff in Hamilton Health Sciences. I'm on staff in several hospital systems across this province. Everywhere I go, I hear little stories about the docs, from Dr. Fierzky to Dr. Flores, to our internal medicine staff, and say, gee, we were trying to recruit them here to Sunnybrook. We were trying to recruit them to Toronto General, but for some reason, they went to Niagara Falls, and we can't figure it out. Dr. Lee, Dr. Spade, and myself are out-of-towners. I don't live here. I drive every morning, an hour and 20 minutes, through snowstorms, through anything. I rode off two cars coming here. And we came here because of a simple reason. This place worked. It actually worked. Things flew in this department. To lose that pearl that you have would be one of the greatest shames that I have ever seen. Thank you.
Okay. I have Dr. Fisher. Councillor Fisher?
Thank you. I too cannot express my sincere thank you for coming here tonight. I'm one of the people that had a family member wait for seven hours in very distressed conditions, and that's not a fair thing in emergency. We've just built a $54 million emergency, and for some reason, we have this waiting time. That should not be. And I'm not blaming doctors. I'm not blaming nurses. I am looking other places for the problem. Fort Erie, they've been very, very busy promoting their hospital. They took the opportunity to, I believe, take buses and go to Queen's Park in protest. Do you have any idea how their results are? I see they're having some results, but not what they want. What could we do? What could we do under your direction that would help all of you, doctors and nurses and patients, patients? I don't want my child to go out of area where I have to go every day. I want them here.
I would say you're going to have to force an engagement. And I don't mean force in a violent sense. I mean it in a positive, constructive sense. You're going to have to get the NHS to drop their guard down and be willing to talk to you beyond the party line, beyond the PR campaign, beyond anything else. You're going to have to get the minister to talk to you and take responsibility for what is his domain: health care. Right now, he says it's the LINS responsibility. The LINS says policy is his responsibility. Nobody any longer is seeming to willing to take responsibility for the millions, hundreds of millions of dollars that comes out of your pockets every day and is spent in ways that you don't agree with in your communities. And it's not just one or two of you. It's everybody. I hear it everywhere I go. You're going to have to get these people to engage you. And I don't know how you're going to do that, but you know what? That's what I usually count on the experts for, and those are politicians.
Thank you. I really want to say the people in Niagara Falls have put their 150% forward over the years by contributing, raising money for this hospital, thinking that they had some kind of ownership, only to be told we have no ownership. And that is very painful. And I know there are other members of this council who have had a waiting time in the emergency. I don't want to experience it again. Whatever I can do to assist, I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councillor Daddi?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Dr. Dobrovolskis, for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Took a lot of courage. And, you know, the sad part about this and the part I'm having a real hard time getting my head wrapped around is the fact that we have the top ER department in the region, do we not, in terms of wait times and client customer satisfaction?
We did.
We did. That's a great way of putting it. We did. And the part that I really had a hard time, and I still have a hard time understanding, is why would the NHS want to attack, approach, restructure the most successful model within their domain here in the region? And I'm wondering, can you offer any suggestions through your worship to shed some light on why? Because to me, I think you find the weakest chain, and you work on that one. You don't go to the one that's your strongest link. And I'm wondering, why would they attack the strongest link in the chain first? Do you have any suggestion?
Doctor? I don't have a good answer for that. And I think the only thing to do is to challenge the NHS administration to give you an answer. I can provide you a viewpoint, but that's not, I can't say is entirely true, because it's not based on what they know. And they're not telling us. They're not telling us the grand picture. So there is a plan. I'm certain there must be, otherwise you couldn't get this far. I hope there's a plan, but that would be Ms. Sevenpiper, Dr. Hope, and the NHS to provide you.
Thank you. And in regard to through your worship, I know the mayor made reference to wait times and whatnot. And if I understand your explanation correctly, the reason, or one of the main reasons contributing to longer wait times is the bottleneck that occurs when you have patients and you have nowhere to put them. Does that fairly encapsulate?
I'll give you an example. Last week, the emergency department was blocked off. We had 23 admitted patients in the department with no place to put them. So after an hour of watching this build-up and the board overflowing, we went and against college guidelines, and I'm going to admit this, against college guidelines, went and saw them in the waiting room, in the ambulance bay, in the triage. We stitched up people there. We packed wounds in the waiting area. We sent people off to x-ray. We sent everything. We were running the emergency department from the front hallway. This happens more than I like to admit, but it's the only way sometimes we can function with the bottleneck that we get.
Councillor?
Yes, thank you. It sounds like a MASH episode, actually, is what that sounds like.
It's not, but it's the only way. And we try and see only the patients that don't require a curtained area and some sort of security.
Well, and the part I appreciate about this is you do what you have to do to get the job done. And ultimately, that's what it comes down to. Somebody needs to see a doctor. They need care. And you don't want someone pulling out a book of guidelines saying that, I'm sorry, I can't take care of you right now because you're in the wrong area of the hospital. You go to the patient, you take care of the patient. To me, that's customer service. And to me, that's what's lacking in this area down here. It's become so homogeneous. It's been so hell-bent on rules and regulations that we've lost the personal touch. I'm just wondering, what's going to happen to that personal touch when the NHS brings Metamerge in to fill the void, which, for those that aren't aware, and, Doctor, I wasn't aware until I was brought up to speed on this, Metamerge is basically a service to hire doctors. It's kind of a, for lack of better words, a temporary service or a Kelly Services for doctors that'll come into the area to fill the void, and as I understand, work on a salary basis. They're expected to see 4.3 patients per hour, whether they see one or 10. They get paid the same amount of money, no matter what. So I don't see the incentive to help people get seen quicker. Whereas, if I understand correctly, the typical model, the doctor gets paid when they see a patient. So there's an incentive to see the patients and get to them more quickly. But with this model, there's no incentive. Could you verify?
The fee-for-service model has been used in 19 hospitals across Ontario at this point. It's rapidly going the way, or being pushed away on the favor of the alternate funding agreement, which is a salaried model. But it has been shown that the fee-for-service hospitals, where volumes exceed 35,000 patients, perform better than alternate funding agreement hospitals, simply because there is motivation. There is motivation to see people. Now, I'm not going to knock Metamerge. They're a good company. They serve a need. They have staffed hospitals in distress in Northern Ontario. They have staffed anesthesia services for the Canadian forces, and they serve a purpose. They are a viable part of a health care plan to temporarily staff a situation. However, is that the way we want to go long-term? One of the issues that we have had is that we've had a fully-staffed model, and we were seeing high volumes. And we see more than an alternate funding agreement doctor. That's a given. I'm not going to sit there and deny that. That's absolutely true. That's been part of the basis of our success. We've only taken experienced physicians in our department, experienced guys who show dedication and a commitment to the department. Now, we are planning on expanding our department and our staffing model. That was to be phased in by Christmas time. This model was rejected. This timetable was rejected, clearly.
And Doctor, we were told, to that point, we were told that the NHS wanted to expand to 14, from six to 14. Is that correct?
Sorry?
Six to 14 doctors?
We're not sure the exact number, but they wanted to staff 40 hours of doctors per day. That was the original report. We've looked at it, and there have been times now when we're seeing doctors who are sitting idle with nothing to do, and they're being paid a salary, because we're bottlenecked. So we have to address, and you know what? If we can fit 40 hours of doctors a day in there and get the patients moving, I'm all for it. Count me in as number one. But when I'm sitting there looking at the board and is finding no place to see my patients, no place to see anybody, and people are getting angry at me when they see me and say, how come I waited? And I can only tell them the emergency department is full, but they can't see that. I can't send them on a tour. Go have a look at Mrs. Smith in the corner, or go have a look at so-and-so in this corner. They've been here for three days. Now, that happens more than I'd like to admit.
So, Doctor, if we were to ask you the question, is doctor staffing an issue as opposed to not having a place because the hospital's backed up from Emerge on?
It wasn't with our prior schedule. We had a fully-staffed schedule. And we also had now a surplus of 12 shifts, which we were planning to incorporate into expanding the physician services to accommodate the NHS's new model. But this was rejected. It wasn't adequate that it would be done by December. It had to be done by September 15th.
So I don't understand where they tell us that they want to expand to 14 doctors. I was reading the report, and yet you're saying there's not enough funding. So how are they going to find the funding?
That is, under the alternate funding agreement, the province, through tax dollars, handles funding.
So what should we believe in that regard? Is there a question that we should be asking with regard to the new hires that they want to make?
I'm not sure how to answer that, Mayor Salsey. It's not a question of the new hires that they want to make. It's a question of putting your money where you're going to get the biggest bang for the buck. And right now, that's in getting hospital beds and getting people seen. If you have an adequate group down there that can do it for a low cost to the province, for a low cost efficiently, with good results, and is a stable group that the city doesn't have to worry about, we know we're going to end up in a crunch, why not? What makes you jump out a new model that gives you more people at the front end, but still doesn't address the issues of the bottlenecks? The fact that we're going to be losing services in this community? What are all these doctors going to do? We're going to be sitting there arranging transfers to St. Catherine's, to pediatric facilities, to psychiatric facilities? That's what we're going to end up doing.
And I think, Doctor, yeah, the hard part to understand is that you do your job, and you're saying you're doing it efficiently. Yeah, when you do your job, you're creating more demand that gets backed up in the hospital. We can't, we don't understand the whole process because you're going to different departments, and you've got people all over that are backed up. So what can we do? Are you saying that it's underfunding in the hospital service in general, or underfunding in your department?
Underfunding in every single department of the hospital. Every single department.
And we know that when we talk to the province about that, they say that this is spending, I was talking to our MPP about this on a number of occasions. He reminds me often that they're spending more than half of the provincial budget on health care. So are we to demand more dollars we spent? Is that the answer that you would recommend to this council?
I think rather than spending a lot of money now on bringing a pile of doctors in, let's put the money where in the grassroots, where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck: nursing, beds, hospice care. We don't have a bottleneck. We have a bottleneck because we don't have these services. Why are we changing the part that worked?
Thank you very much.
Do I say something before you?
Actually, you do. He's just talking about that.
Just to the point. You keep saying, we were told, and you quote Bed Statistics, and you just said that you read a report in regard. What report do you have that we don't?
No, there's a report that came out. I went to the NHS restructuring, actually, the NHS Information Session last Thursday, held in Fort Erie, which we were all invited to go to. I did see that.
Do you have a copy of that report that you can circulate through council?
I can get a copy of that.
I would appreciate that, because, and I'd like a copy for our HIP committee, because we don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. There was a study done on the NHS Emerge. I think, Doctor, that's public information that is all around.
Dr. Dubinsky's report?
Yes.
It was highly contested by the emergency doctors of the department.
Yeah.
And, Dr. Paul, we haven't seen it, just so that you're clear.
Well, we got a copy of that.
The politicians, maybe the mayor's seen it, but we haven't seen it.
Okay. Yeah, and we did attend a meeting on Friday, sorry, Thursday last in Fort Erie. I've been to four or five sessions of information sessions, but...
And we were all invited?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you were at one of them, weren't you?
No.
Well?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. They've been advertised, I think, in the paper as well, with the NHS emergency, and the NHS is dealing with the information sessions that they have.
Yeah. When you get invited, can you forward it to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Worship, I just have two questions and two comments. I'll be quick. Dr. Dobrovolskis, you made mention of the Dubinsky report. And I know, report, I mean, you know, you can pick a report to serve your desired outcome. And I mean, pick a report kind of thing. And I'm just wondering, speaking of Dubinsky, what's your perspective on the Dubinsky report?
I was very dissatisfied with the way the report was, first of all, launched on us on 11th hour. In the evening, we were told that the report, the study would be starting to take place the next morning, when our chief was away on holiday. This has been a highly contested issue. And I don't want to go into the personal aspects of it, but the grounds of the report were based on a lack of leadership at the NHS, a lack of stability in our group. I really kind of found that one tough to believe, lack of sustainability, and poor patient care. Yet, the statistics of the NHS provided in its own sheets was contrary to that. We highly contested the Dubinsky report. It was supposed to be released to us two weeks after the report. It occurred two months after. The NHS believes firmly in the report, and I give them that right to believe in the report. But I also asked them to look at the Power Study, which is now a published report. And I asked if they want, let's bring that report up for open public debate.
Should be, Doctor. That's the Power Study?
Power Study was a study originally that was done of emergency departments comparing fee-for-service models with salaried models.
In what year?
It was done last year and the year before, for several Power 1, Power 2 studies. These are great acronyms. Don't ask me to go into that. But these studies looked at the efficiency of departments based on fee-for-service versus salaried departments. looked at the efficiency of departments based on fee-for-service versus salaried departments.
Thank you. All right, doctor, any further questions yet?
Thank you, Your Worship. Fort Erie, now, Fort Erie is now going to be downgraded to an urgent care facility. How will that impact the current status at the hospital? Will that increase the workload at the emergency department?
All C tasks, and that's the Canadian Trauma Assessment Score, or Triage Assessment Score, ones and twos, will likely be diverted to GNG. It's basically an urgent care center. It's not designed to take care of life-threatening emergencies. And it will serve as a urgent care center. Exactly what they say is, it's an urgent care center. It's not a hospital.
Thank you again, Your Worship. Now, when you are working the night shift, and there are no patients coming through, and you're sitting there waiting for a patient to come through, when that does happen, do you get paid?
When I see a patient, if they have health insurance. If they don't, we see them anyway.
So if there's no patient, though, to be seen?
We don't get paid.
You don't get paid. And with this model here, these people will be on a salary, so to speak. So they'll get paid regardless, and I'm speaking specifically of Metamerge, if there are no patients, they'll still be paid.
That is correct.
So my question to you, through Your Worship, is, in your opinion, is this going to increase our service, or will this save us expenses by changing to this new model?
If you have two doctors on per shift, each making a salary, you're not only going to have to handle the administrative fees to have those two doctors there, but you're going to have to pay them. That money has to come from somewhere. I know that based on the current models, we don't bill enough during the day to see, to pay for that guy, pay for the second guy. The money's going to have to come from somewhere. I don't know where it's going to come from.
And just a statement, one last question, through You, Your Worship. You know, it seems to me that this plan of going to Metamerge, and again, I know you're not critical of Metamerge, however, it seems to me that's a Band-Aid solution. It's like when you get a flat tire, and you put that donut tire from the trunk on, and it's not meant to be used for long distances or high speeds. But it's there to get you to where you need to be, so that you can fix it properly. And it seems to me, we're using a Band-Aid as the solution.
I trust that that's not the NHS's long-term plan. I hope it's not the NHS's long-term plan.
But we don't know that, do we?
Right now, we don't know what's going on. But the NHS is using agencies, and I won't say just Metamerge. I'll say Health Force Ontario, moving doctors from other communities here. And I respect these doctors. They all care about patients. I'm never going to sit there and say any one of these guys don't care about their patients or would not take care dutifully. If they did, if they didn't, then I would be on their cases. But if I see that they're doing a good job, I have no qualms with anybody. Metamerge, otherwise. I don't care where they're from, who hired them. But what I want to see is quality healthcare in Niagara. I want to see efficient, affordable healthcare. It's not going to bankrupt the system.
It's been suggested to me, and I've got a question for you. First of all, I think it's best that a doctor that wants to be here because they're happy here. And if it just so happens that you've got an efficient, functional model, that the doctors are happy because, as it's been demonstrated to me, a lot of you have lives outside of your medical careers. Some of the doctors are chefs, training to be chefs, some are, am I right?
That is correct.
Yeah. Dr. Ternick, some doctors are interested in other things, sailing, traveling.
Good carving ability.
What's that? Good carving ability, you're right. Thank you, Councilor Carey.
Very small slices, though.
But the doctors are here because they want to be. You could be a doctor anywhere you wanted to be. Because right now, is there a shortage for emergency doctors in the province of Ontario?
Otherwise, Health Force and Metamerge would not exist. If you currently look on the Health Force Ontario website, you'll see there are numerous communities that are now pleading for doctors. I hoisted up my banner, and I've had multiple phone calls saying, you want to come and work here. And it's not going to be a problem if doctors leave this community and find other places. But I want you to realize, we don't want to leave. We like it here. We like the people, we like the community, we like our colleagues. We enjoy working in this environment. We really believe in it. I also do anesthesia. I'm also a coroner. I've also done a lot of other things. And I've looked at other opportunities, and my wife constantly bugs me and says, hey, wouldn't you like to move down and work, take practice somewhere else? And she says, you do that dumb drive every morning. You know what? I don't mind. I like driving through Niagara. I like seeing the flowers. And you know what? I like coming here. I like the nurses that I work with. I like the docs, and I like the people. And that's why we're here.
And one last comment, Your Worship. And I would agree. And I would much rather have someone here that wants to be here. It's a choice they've made. Of all the places you could work, you choose to be here. And the efforts we spend on doctor recruitment, we always try to bring top-notch people here. Currently, we've got the best model, working model, in the, in the region. And the last question for you, it's been suggested, some people perhaps within the NHS feel that the doctors in our emergency ward, because you're so efficient, that perhaps it's an issue that you're making too much income, and it's a jealousy thing, or it's a way to break your spirit so that they can bring you in line. And I just wanted, because, let's bring it out in the public. You know, it's something that's been whispered, and I know something that's been yelled in the quarters of the NHS. My question to you, doctor, is, how would you address that kind of a comment? I know the healthcare, where we are right now in Niagara Falls, and for me, I don't have a problem if a doctor's earning is keep. I think, you deserve every cent that you get, and as well as the emergency nurses who are outstanding that work with you. But the question is, about those people that are trying to break your spirit because you've got a working model for 25 years, how would you address that last comment? Thank you, Your Worship.
Everybody hates to talk about the money issue, but you know what's real? Every one of you is paid to be here. Every one of you has a business or some other life. I work the NHS 12 days a month. That's all, 12 days a month. All of us do. Okay? We make about the same basic income as any emergency physician who works the same number of hours in Ontario. We're exactly in line with Trillium Health Services, St. Joseph's Hospital in Toronto, or sorry, in Hamilton. And if you look at the median salaries, which are posted through the Ontario Medical Association, through the College of Physicians, well, actually not, through the Ontario Government, our median salaries are the same. Thing is, we work hard in a short burst of time, which has allowed all of us to have balanced lives. We work two 10-hour shifts and two 14-hour shifts. We do that because two-day shifts, 10 hours is about right for us. 10 hours, not bad. We get time for lunch during there. We get time for everything. At 14 hours a night, it tends to quieten down between 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. So that's the time when you should come in, by the way, if you have something wrong.
They don't let me in.
Now, but that also lets me time to do a full practice in critical care medicine and anesthesia. And I like to maintain my certification. That's my parents' specialty. My mom always taught me it was rude to ask somebody how much money they make. But I don't make as much as money as a specialist in Ontario does. I prefer to work here because I make enough money, that I pay my bills, that I keep my wife happy, that my mortgage is paid, and revenue candidate is not up my case. And that is, we're in line with every other emergency position in the province, based on a standard rate. No different. There is no magic number that we're millionaires raking it in, and we're trying to protect our income. And I have offered to Mr. Crater, if he, when he had suggested, there must have been rumored to that effect, I will gladly at this time post my Ontario Health Insurance billings as to what I bill in a year at Niagara. And he has been accepting of that position, and I still can maintain that offer.
Thank you. Counselor Cario?
Worship, just to add my comments, doctor, we don't want you to leave. We don't want any of the other doctors to leave. We love our hospital. We like it, the way it used to work. We'd like to see it get back to the way it used to work. Speaking from a position, I've spent a lot of time at the hospital in the last four or five months. It's not the same hospital that it once was. I don't think anybody around the table is going to argue with you. But you're speaking to the converted, this group in particular, the mayor, Counselor Anoni, Diadati, Thompson, everyone around here has, has been speaking up about the problems that our hospital will continue to fight, send resolutions, do whatever we can. I thank you for coming and speaking out tonight, and you've given us a valuable tool in this letter. I think that, you know, we've struggled to get things written down by doctors, so that we have some tools to work with. So thank you for that, because we've got a tool as well to work with tonight. And thank you for all your hard work. And I know what most of the doctors make. A couple of them are good friends of mine. They're not overpaid. The nurses are not overpaid. The people who clean up the messes down there are not overpaid. Most of us would not want to do a lot of the jobs that I watch on a daily basis, people do down at that hospital. They're certainly not overpaid. And we appreciate everything that you do. And as a group, we're going to continue to fight to keep our hospital and to get it back to what it once was. And I personally pledge, as Counselor Fisher did, the mayor and all the others do, to do whatever I can do to be one small voice to add to the, what I'm hoping is going to be a growing list of voices to come to your aid and our hospital's aid and continue the fight to get our hospital back to what it once was, so we can be proud of it again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Anoni, one more question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like support of this council for our HIP committee to take an initiative. Dr. Paul said we need to take a stand. So let's use a little clip like Fort Erie had a catchphrase. Let's start a take-a-stand initiative. I'd like support of this council for funds to run ads to start the initiative. I know we had to do a phone poll before. We can't do this free. It does take some sort of funds that council will be informed of. But I think we need the residents to fill Niagara Falls arena. We need the residents to fill buses. We've got to cut out the middleman. No more Minister Kaplan, no more Minister Bradley, no more Lynn. We need to talk to Premier McGinty, and maybe a message, you talk to concerned citizens, well, here's a message from Niagara Falls to the premier. We need you to step in now. Our docs have told you, we need you to step in now. Does it take a mass casualty at GNGH before anybody's going to listen to us and somebody's family member's dead? So I'd like to support a, like a motion. I'd like to make that motion that we start a take-a-stand initiative. I'd like some sort of a budget to run just Niagara Falls review ads, and to start whatever funding we need to do that.
I would love a second motion, and I would ask the doctor, if you would, we have Dr. I mean?
Join me.
Yeah, if you would assist us in the first couple of meetings to get this thing going. And I think it was going well before, but I think we could use your help.
I'd love to, and I'd also like to ask my fellow physicians to participate in that committee.
We already had several, but we welcome them all.
Your Worship, that we open it up to the rest of council to be part of this committee as well.
Yes, I think that's reasonable. That's been a problem that we've had before. I'd like to ask a question, doctor. We haven't, we'd like to engage the, the matter of, of the NHS and having a discussion and dialogue with them. Counselor Anoni, have a question?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think, what problem have we had?
Well, we're trying to get the NHS to sit and talk with us, and.
Oh, you're not talking about a problem within your HIP committee that's been endorsed by council seven or eight times?
Well, it's been discussed a few times. It's endorsed a few times, that's right.
Yeah, just, I want to make clear, we haven't had a problem in the way we organize, nor the flow of information that comes to council.
No, we've talked about that. We've been through that dialogue. So, doctor, the engagement of the NHS, I think, is important as well. I've attended a number of Lynn meetings. I've attended the NHS sessions, and listened and asked questions. We, we should probably have a discussion with the NHS here at this chamber. We have had reluctance by the NHS to attend, and some dialogue with them in public. So I think that seems to be a challenge. Have you had that same difficulty?
It is difficult to speak to members of the NHS at an upper level. There's a distinct management structure. And I challenge you to, to come in here and, and join us in an open debate, an open discussion on what this community really needs.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can extend that invitation, I think, as well. Perhaps we should do that formally and go from there.
I'd like to make that motion. Oh, we made it, and the seven piper has denied coming. But I'd like to make that motion again, that we invite her down here to address Dr. Paul's.
We have one motion on the floor, first of all. Okay, so we'll deal with that secondly.
What's the motion?
Pardon? Well, the first motion we have on the floor, Mr. Clerk, would you give us the first motion, please?
The take-a-stand initiative. It was just, if you remember correctly, it was just the money for the ads for the review to get people into initiative. I don't know the number. I know better after the review gives us a call.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. We don't have a budget in place, so you'll have to come back with a report. Maybe you can do that. Maybe that should be incorporated in the, in the motion, is that what you're suggesting?
Actually, then I'd like an upset limit of, say, $5,000 to start running ads in the review, because I don't want to wait two more weeks to start. Fort Erie's started immediately the next day and had a budget, and I don't want to drag our feet or worry about the NHS, or whether Mr. McGinty's going to listen to us or not. We need to take the stand now, according to Dr. Paul.
Counselor Cario, let's answer your question.
I'm assuming the review will do a special appeal for us on this.
They have actually been very interested.
Okay. Well, the first motion on the floor is to reinvigorate the committee and to have the council involved, and to start a committee, including the doctors. Again, to engage a budget of $5,000. Any other questions or comments?
Are you saying start a new committee, or have the HIP committee keep council informed?
No, there's, Counselor, Diadati made a motion to include the whole council. Or asking the motion to include the whole council, that's what I'm, exactly. That's you're talking about, right? Yeah, okay, good. So that's the motion on the floor. So any questions or comments? Having seen on all those in favor, motion's carried, you asked me. Thank you. The second motion?
The budget.
No, we got the budget, $5,000. We mentioned that. Second motion to invite the NHS to come?
I'm sorry?
The second motion, you're not paying attention. I'm asking for the second motion.
We're talking a lot about the initiative.
The second motion. Does anyone else want to make a motion? Counselor Cario?
I think the other motion that you, you know, to have the NHS come to council. That's.
I did make that one.
Okay. No, no, we dealt with the first motion first, and I asked for that second to be dealt with now.
The second one.
Okay. Move by Counselor Cario, second by Counselor Anoni?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Having seen on all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, doctor, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's great. I appreciate.
Great, thank you. Remember, the council will move on to the next matter. We have a planning, a public meeting before us, and at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning by law to prohibit residential use on a proposed severance lot at Shishler and Willadel Roads. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on August 31st, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their right to appeal, shall leave their name, appeal to the OMB, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call upon the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hrlavich?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. This application involves a rural parcel in the former Willaby area. It's to remove the single-family detached dwelling as a permitted use from the zoning on this land. The land, as the clerk has pointed out, is at the corner of Willadel Road and Shishler Road. It's largely a rural area. It's outside of the urban boundaries. The applicant is requesting the zone change to remove the single detached dwelling as a use in order to limit the property to be a farm-use-only parcel. The lands are 40 acres. Label is Part II on this particular plan. These are the lands that are currently being cultivated. They were separated from Part I to the right-hand side of the drawing by the Committee of Adjustment. The Committee of Adjustment considered the application to sever that five-hector parcel of, of land, which is, don't have it in acres, sorry. The, five hectares of land from the, from the balance of the prop, which has the dwelling on it, and to leave the vacant agricultural parcel. The lands are designated as agriculture, agricultural, and under the provincial policy statements, new residential lots would not be allowed, nor does the official plan permit it. However, the Committee of Adjustment granted the severance and imposed the condition to retain Parcel II, so that there would be, or rezoned Parcel II, so that there'd be no new dwellings, which in essence would have the effect of not creating any new residential lot. The zoning on the parcel is currently rural in part, conservation open space in part. The rural zone permits the detached dwelling, as I've said, and this would, removal of that detached dwelling would satisfy the committee's condition, and it would have the effect of ensuring that the lands remain agricultural only. Therefore, we're supporting the application, as it will satisfy the condition of Committee of Adjustment, and it will maintain the agricultural use. Recommendation before council then is that the council approved the zoning bylaw amendment application to change the rural zoning on the subject land, remove the single detached dwelling, and have the effect of prohibiting a house from being constructed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Interior Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak for the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward, sir. Be kind enough to identify yourself, and just to note, we have a 10-minute limit. Your address, please?
Yes, my name is Dave Harris.
Thank you.
And I live at 12195 Willadel Road. I also own the adjoining farm that abuts the 40-acre parcel.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
And so I'm to understand that they're removing the zoning for a single dwelling, and it's to go back to agricultural use. Is that-
To be restricted to agricultural use. Mr. Hurlovich, you want to confirm that, please?
That's correct. It currently is being farmed. It would only be usable as a farm parcel. No house.
Oh, okay. Very good. Excellent. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Once again, is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, at this time, then, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. It's nice to be here. I really haven't got too much to say on this. This was a requirement that the Committee of Adjustment imposed, and you people were aware of the situation. So really, it's agricultural use only. Everything's got, the status quo retained. This is done, actually, I was at the Committee of Adjustment in Niagara Lake, and they did another one of these, agricultural use only. So they seem to be doing it quite often. I was there on last Thursday. But anyways, I don't think I can really usefully add anything more, and any questions you have, I prepare to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Sinclair? No, I guess there are not. So thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. I think it's pretty obvious, and we appreciate you coming back for the continuation of the resolution of the matter. So thank you so much.
Okay.
Once again, then, members of, a member of council, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. A motion to approve the recommendation moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium of 3915 Portage Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act, but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on September 11th. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, worship. This application involves an existing building on the west side of Portage Road. It's known as the Brighton. It's an application to convert the property from rental apartments to a condominium apartment building. The property is shown in blue on the location map. It's just north of five corners, and it's beside another apartment building. The, the building has 57 rental units in it. The applicant wishes to convert it to condominium ownership, which would allow each unit to be owned individually with common areas such as the driveways, open space, parking shared by the condominium corporation. The site plan is in front of you. There's a large landscaped area around the building. The building is shown in red. There's a underground parking garage for this building, as well as surface parking. The, as the city clerk mentioned, there's no public meeting requirement, but council's position is that we circulate these kinds of applications to the tenants. All the tenants in the building were notified on September 11th, so this would be coming before council. The official plan discourages the conversion of condominiums when the vacancy rate is below 3%. Region has a similar policy. The latest statistics that we have from Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation records the city's overall vacancy rate is 5.2% and a 3.7% vacancy in the non-core area. This is considered a non-core area. The conversion of this building from rental to condominium would comply with this policy. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council support the plan of condominium, that it be draft approved, subject to conditions outlined in the appendix to the report. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much. Again, are there any questions from any members of council? Okay, having seen none, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of condominium. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter? Once again, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Having seen none, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Is the representative here? Thank you.
Good evening, worship, members of council. I'm going to simply ask that you move the recommendation unless there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you. No questions of Mr. Vaca? Right, thank you very much. At this time, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of condominium is now concluded. On the pleasure of council, Counsel Cari?
Move the recommendations.
Yes, and seconded by Counsel Maves. Thank you very much. Yes, question, Counsel Wing?
Not a question, just a comment. I'm going to vote against this as a matter of principle. As I indicated, the last time we had a condominium conversion application before, I have ongoing concerns about the possible negative impacts on our property tax revenue stream resulting from these conversions. We seem to be getting some conflicting information from staff about them, and I am just uneasy now with these applications.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, I just, I just find it very puzzling why this is going on at this particular time, why we're getting so many condominium conversions. Obviously, with the age of this building, with the unlikelihood of very many units being sold, what kind of an atmosphere was going to exist in this particular development? If you sell 10 units, how do you form a condominium board? Obviously, the landlord is totally in control. I really am puzzled why this is happening, and I don't, I don't really understand it. It's confusing, and I don't really know the advantage unless it's a tax advantage, which really hasn't been proven to us as yet.
Counsel, you've heard that comment a few times, given to us by staff, and I'm not sure if anybody on staff wishes to address Counsel Thompson's question further? Anybody else? Mr. Beaman?
I think Counsel Thompson did it right on that. It hasn't been proven one way or the other in Niagara. The examples that I, that first got me involved in these things were in Halton. We went to war over them because it was massive tax implications for those ones, but the research Mr. Harrison conducted here indicated that the tax result was neutral on the properties that were under the microscope at that time here in Niagara.
Okay. Perhaps, Mr. Vaca, would you offer any comments to the council with respect to the question?
Through you, worship, I can only speak about this particular case. What's driving this is the owner's in his 70s, and this is simply for estate planning purposes. We're going to create separate deeds for each unit, so he can deed it to his children if he wishes through his estate plan or sell the units over time. So that's what's driving this case.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the qualification. Members of council, you've heard the comment and response. Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Members of council, I wanted to beg your indulgence to move up a matter, if we may, under consent agenda PD 2009-73, a draft plan of condominium 6515 McLeod Road. The applicant and his solicitor are here, and if you wouldn't mind, we have a motion to move that forward, please. Moved by Counsel Cari, or seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor, motion's carried. Dealing with the matter, we have a recommendation that the draft plan of condominium be approved subject to the conditions attached in the appendix, and it does list some other issues. So can we have a motion to move the recommendation? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cari. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. We wanted some comments, if I may, members of council. I want to begin this evening by offering again our sincere condolences to Mr. Harry Van Dyke, the manager of Transit Fleet and Facility for Niagara Falls Transit, on the tragic passing this weekend of his wife, Karen. We'd also like to extend our sincere condolences to transit operator Cliff Barnhart, whose father, Peter, passed away this weekend as well. It was a very busy and exciting time in Niagara Falls this past week. On our Friday, we were extremely pleased to welcome to City Hall Minister John Baird, who's the Federal Minister of Transportation, Infrastructure and Communities, along with our federal MP, Rob Nicholson, Minister of Justice and Attorney General for Canada, and MPP Kim Crater, on behalf of Minister George Smitherman, Ontario's Deputy Premier, and Minister of Energy and Infrastructure, to receive their respective financial commitments to our, for our downtown streetscape funding application. This project is valued at approximately $2.7 million, with each level of government contributing a third. As you're aware, this project will see improvement of walkways, street lighting, water main and sewer systems, as well as the roadway infrastructure, and a planned revitalization of the eastern gateway. As well, this morning, we hit the jackpot when we were able to personally welcome Minister Smitherman to Niagara Falls to receive the exciting news that the provincial government recognizes the need and importance of an integrated people mover system in Niagara Falls for our residents and for our visitors alike. The provincial government's commitment of $25 million today added to the federal government's reaffirmed $25 million, which will enable for the people mover project to move forward. In other good news, in the city, I was pleased to be able to welcome General Rick Hilliard to our community for a weekend pomp and circumstance. He was inducted into the Canadian branch of the International Knightly Order of St. George, as well as being named the order's patron. On behalf of council and the residents of Niagara Falls, I was able to thank and to present the general with a key to the city, and our congratulations go to the general and the grand prior Gareth Green and his committee for their outstanding efforts to recognize General Hilliard's commitment to our country and, most recently, to the military Families Fund, which he initiated to assist the families of our injured and/or killed Canadian soldiers, both financially and morally. It was also a great day last Friday for a barbecue, and we'd like to say thank you to all those of city staff, the downtown merchants, the general public, who were able to join us for our Alzheimer lunch break. Approximately $1,000 was raised for the Alzheimer Society of the Niagara region. The Fourth Annual Our Turn to Pray Week, organized by the Niagara Falls Ministerial Association, began last evening and offers all of our community the opportunity to participate in prayer services at various venues throughout the city for the balance of the week. Complete details are available at www dot ourturn dot ca. As well, this year, the 36th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is one of the Our Turn to Pray Week activities, and I invite you to join us at Club Italia on Thursday, October 1st, beginning at 6:30 a.m. for this longstanding tradition. This year's guest speaker is NHL legend Paul Henderson. Tickets are $12 for adults and $8 for students. As well, I've been asked by our Parks, Recreation and Culture Office to provide you with a save-the-date notification. This year's Santa Claus Parade will be on Saturday, November 28th, again, beginning at 11 a.m. The theme is "Celebrate the Everyday Champion," and in celebration of the Vancouver 2010 Winter Olympics, and will feature the Vancouver 2010 mascots, namely Miga, Kwachi and Sumi, as the grand parade marshals. I'd also like to remind everyone that the annual man-a-mile relay race hosted by the Niagara Regional Athletics Track and Field Club will take place on Thanksgiving Monday, October 12th, beginning at 8 a.m. from McFarland Park off the Niagara Parkway and ending at Oaks Park in Niagara Falls. I understand that Counsel Peter Angelo, your wife, is a competitor in that event, so we wish her well as well. And finally, I'm sure that many of you have had the opportunity to read the recent newspaper article regarding our own, our very own Rudy Hafen, President and Chief Pilot for Niagara Helicopters, who has been nominated for the Flight Global Aviator of the Year Award for his daring rescue of the man who went over the falls on March 11th of this year. The Aviator of the Year is defined as advancing the cause of safety and operational best practice in the field of aviation. No one can deny that Rudy used his incredible talents that cold March morning, as he has done on so many other occasions, when he's assisted our fire and police departments, as well in rescuing people from the river and the gorge, and with no thought for his own safety. The Flight Global Award is a public vote, and you can register your vote in support of Rudy at www dot flightglobal dot com until October 4th. So it's www dot flightglobal dot com until October 4th, or if you go to the Niagara Helicopters website, I'm sure they'll direct you as well. Again, thank you for allowing me to make our comments this evening, and we hope that, we wish Rudy good success and good luck in his endeavors to be nominated as Aviator of the Year. Moving on to the next items on the agenda, we'll move on to ratification of Community Services Committee actions.
Communications.
I'm sorry. Let me just go back a moment, please. Go back to communications and comments from the city clerk. Again, item number 1A, library board vacancy. There's a request of the library board to fill the existing vacancies and recommendation that council fill three vacancies. Counsel Thompson?
I would move the, we've had a recommendation, and also the third one that was a recent addition to that.
In the report?
Yes.
Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Fisher, correct? Any further comments or questions by members of council? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. And also, the next item, Park in the City, request the Park in the City Committee to fill existing vacancy. Recommendation that the council fill the vacancy. Counsel Wing?
I think Counsel Peter Angelo is going to make the same motion, that we appoint the committee's preferred candidate.
Okay, moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Once again, any questions or comments from staff, from council? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. And the third item, 1C, is the Trails and Bike Way vacancy. Request the Trails and Bike Way Committee to fill the existing vacancy. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 2, we have requests from the Chippewa Willoughby Arena, request a waiver of arena fees associated with the 50th anniversary of West Lane Secondary School. Counsel Fisher?
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments. First of all, this group, who is working very hard for free and not raising money to bring back all the people that they can bring back with their families to Niagara Falls to enjoy the celebration for the 50 years. So I would like to make a motion that council provide a grant equal to all costs associated with the rent of the Chippewa Willoughby Memorial Arena, including insurance costs for the celebration of the 50th anniversary for the opening of the West Lane Secondary School.
Seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any comments or questions? Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. Is that equal to the amount that's in the report here? 1225?
I believe the value is between 1,200 and 2,400. Is that correct? Ms. Morrissey, would you like to address that?
Through you, worship, there is a short email that I provided to Dean, and it's based on an estimate of a $2,500 fee for direct rental of the facility. However, that does not include what the permit is always required to incur as cost, their insurance, any other additional fees such as security. If those fees are added, they wouldn't be known until were actually incurred, and we don't know what their insurances would be. So, I mean, you could be actually increasing those costs to about $8,000 potentially.
Counsel Fisher?
Because they're not fundraising, because they're doing this with their heart to bring back all these people who will bring money into the city, this is my motion.
Any further comments from members of council? Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, it's difficult to pass a motion if we don't know the cost.
Exactly.
I mean, that's the problem that I have with it. If I can just get a cost, I can make a decision.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Well, I would suggest you'd be signing off on the figure that Ms. Morrissey provided, which is approximately $2,500.
And that doesn't include the others? Counsel Fisher's including the insurance, which we're advised could drive it up to about $8,000.
Sorry, just to clarify, I'm saying, if you had to include security, we don't know what their insurance would be unless it's covered under the city and any other event-related needs that they would have. I'm just giving you an up, based on similar two-day events. It could be up to $8,000. It may be $4,000. I just want council to be aware. We don't have an idea of what those additional costs would be until an organizer-
So we don't have an idea of the total cost yet?
We only know what the direct base rental would be, and that's approximately $2,500.
Do you think it's hard with that to make it subject to a report back to council when we got the firm price, but approve it in principle?
Well, we'll start with council approving the $2,500, and then we'll have a report coming back. Is that your-
The whole thing. There's a report coming back. Bring the report back.
So we'll have a report coming back to council, council understanding that. We're approving the, you're actually approving, you're asking for approval of the whole thing, but-
$2,500 plus a report back.
$2,500 plus a report, fine. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, I'm a bit confused, because, I mean, in the letter from West Lane, they're only asking for $1,200- Lane, they're only asking for 1,225.
Yes. Yes.
West Lane quoted 1,225. I asked Ms. Morrissey for comment, she said that wasn't a realistic figure, that would not cover off all the possibilities. Without having more details from the organizers, staff estimated about $2,500.
So, right now, we have a motion on the floor, members of council, to go to $2,500 with a report asking for additional information on the insurance and the other costs, which will come back to council. Counsel Maves?
I have a, declare a conflict with regards to the insurance portion.
Okay. Conflict still noted. Okay, any other questions by members of council? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? Opposed? Okay, and one conflict. Thank you. Move on to the Gale Center, request a waiver of fees. Again, Canadian Cancer Society is bringing Hockey for Hope Tournament in July 2010. We have a recommendation to refer to staff and budget deliberations.
Sure, sir.
Refer to staff, moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Cario. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Item number 3A, we have Fire Prevention Week requested that October 4th to October 10th be proclaimed as Fire Prevention Week, and October 10th, 2009, be designated as Fire Service Recognition Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Niagara Falls Public Library requests that the week of October 18th to 24th, 2009, be proclaimed as Ontario Public Library Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Item number, actually, item C, Lupus Foundation of Ontario requests the month of October be declared as Lupus Awareness Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Item 3D, Boost Child Abuse Prevention and Intervention, requests the month of October be proclaimed as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Item number 3E, QP and SCFP requests that October 21st, 2009, be proclaimed as Child Care Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Fisher. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. And item 3F, Homelessness Awareness Week, that's the week of October 11th, 2009, be proclaimed as Homelessness Awareness Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Once again, council's heard the motion, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items? I think we do have one with the Heritage Committee.
That's correct, it's in your additions. Probably Counselor Wing can speak to it more eloquently, but basically, it's regarding the Bamfield Hall property. There's a request for a painting of that, and because the report wouldn't be able to come forward to October 19th, they want to expedite that because of the contractor, I believe, who's available.
Okay, request by the Heritage Committee to approve the painting of 4761 Zimmerman Avenue. Moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Once again, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We call upon ratification of Community Services Committee actions. Counsel Ianone?
Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from the September 28th, 2009, meeting of Community Services Committee. One minute, that the minutes of the September 14th meeting be adopted as recorded. Under reports, TS 2009-39, Fourth Avenue Temporary Use and Mitigation Plan for Access to Gale Center, that the committee endorse the action plan outlined in the report. Under TS 2009-38, Park Street Parking Control Review, that a permit parking zone is implemented on the north side of Park Street between 1.37 meters west of St. Clair Avenue and 1.14 meters west of Ontario, and that staff report back on traffic issues, and that the police be contacted requesting speed enforcement. Under MW 2009-72, amendment by law 2007-161, collection of rates and meter costs, that council adopt the proposed amendments to bylaw 2007-161, that will clarify the timing for the establishment of water accounts, update the purchase cost for new water meters, and update the costs for bulk water purchases. Under MW 2009-71, Oakwood Drive Reconstruction Development Agreement with Oakwood Place Shopping Centers Inc., Smart Centers, that the city enter into an agreement with Oakwood Park Shopping Centers Inc. for the reconstruction of Oakwood Drive south of McLeod Road, that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to execute the development agreement, that the 2009 capital budget project worksheet be amended as shown in attachment 2, to reflect the new funding opportunities. Under MW 2009-70, Edgewood Estate Subdivision Storm Water Management Facility Development Charges Payment, that's a big one, that staff be authorized to process payment to the developer of the Edgewood Estate Subdivision 1473944 Ontario Limited for the oversizing of the storm water management facility in the amount of $332,679.36, and I so move.
Moved by Counsel Ianone, seconded by Counsel Cario. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Last for ratification, of Corporate Services Committee action, Counsel Peter Angelo, the Chair.
Thank you, Worship. At the Corporate Services meeting that was held before this, committee approved the following. First, that the minutes of the September 14th meeting be adopted as recorded. Under reports, CD 2009-12, dealing with the Green Oaks Home Mobile Park, that the city declined to enact a bylaw pursuant to section 99.1 of the Municipal Act, to specifically deal with the Green Oaks mobile home park situation, but that staff continue to investigate the possibility of a bylaw related to conversion applications. Next report, CPS 2009-11, dealing with 6592 Dunn Street Disposition of Property. It was recommended that the city rezone the subject property from residential to open space, also that we lift part lock control from the subject and abutting properties, also that we prepare a reference plan to show the portions of the property used by the abutting landowners of 6580, 6590, and 6602 Dunn Street. Also recommended that we negotiate the sale of the property to the abutting landowners according to the reference plan for the appraisal value of $1,000 and for the cost of the transaction. Also recommended that we amend the heritage designation of 6590, the subject property, with certain conditions, example, the preservation of trees, no construction of buildings, fences, et cetera. And lastly, as part of the report, that the city carry out any other actions to satisfy council's intent. Next report, F 2009-46, dealt with the 2008 consolidated financial statements, it was recommended that council receive these statements for information purposes. The fourth report was F 2009-45, dealing with the operating results as of August 31st, 2009. Once again, it was recommended that we receive the report for information. Next report, CPS 2009-09, dealt with the Water/Wastewater Operations Long Range Financial Plan. It was recommended that we allocate $19,780 plus taxes to engage a consultant to develop a Water/Wastewater Operations Long Range Financial Plan in accordance with the Ontario Regulations. And lastly, Your Worship, F 2009-04, dealing with the Radio System Project, it was recommended that council authorize staff to designate Blentel as the preferred proponent for the Niagara Falls Services, sorry, Niagara Falls Fire Services Radio System, that staff negotiate with the preferred proponent as per the request for proposal, to conclude the terms of a contract for the replacement of the Niagara Falls Fire Services Radio System at an upset limit of $2,099,035. And lastly, that at the conclusion of the negotiations, yourself and the clerk be authorized to execute the contract, and I would so move the minutes.
Thank you, Counsel. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Once again, you've heard the comment, the motion, I should say. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Members of council, we have a consent agenda to move forward with, if you want to take that in whole. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Move on to bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for the council's consideration?
I'd just draw your attention to the additions of bylaw 2009-151, the correct bylaws in your additions, not the one in your package, and that's related to the Water Works bylaw that was referred to in the Community Services ratification.
Okay. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws, introduce the bylaws and give the bylaws a first reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by, seconded Counsel Cario. Once again, council's heard the motion, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2009-150 to 2009-158, read a first time.
Any motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion, any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2009-150 to 2009-158, read a second and third time of pass.
Thank you. Is there any new business this evening? Counsel Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After our hospital conversation, I got an email from Counselor Puttig, who says he watched the hospital discussion tonight, and the question was asked how to get the NHS to listen, and his comment is, the region donated $25 million to a new hospital paid annually, and he would be willing to make a motion to withhold the funding until a full [inaudible] read GNGH and other hospital matters. Maybe it's time to pull our regional counselors into this debate now, so that we're not the only level of government down here fighting it and fighting it alone. So, maybe asking for input from our four regional counselors, well, you've made your comments here, Mr. Mayor, but our other three regional counselors, and it would be interesting to see if we can get the backing and support of them too. And I just want to go back to clarify the motion that Counselor Diodati made. I emailed the clerk after that, because I was confused, are we now nine members of the HIP committee? And that makes us a committee of council, where we have to have the clerk, we have to have city staff, we have to have it formalized. That was not Counselor Diodati's intent. So, I asked Mr. Irfita if he could make a suggestion, and he said he would be happy to speak to it, because this wasn't what we were aiming for.
What I heard Counsel Diodati did, I said, was to include the council, is that what you're suggesting, the rest of the council?
Yes, Your Worship, I wanted it to be open to any members that wanted to be there. However, I don't want to tie us to where we've got to have a formal period where we have to advertise it and worry about the clerk's availability. These doctors are...
We're on the phone.
They are so busy and on call, it's very, very difficult. Even some of our meetings are called just a couple days before, so, Your Worship, I wouldn't want to disadvantage the committee where the doctors couldn't be a part of it either, so, I'm not sure. I want to include all of council, I think it's important, however, I don't want to cripple the committee where we can't meet with the doctors who've got the best input. So, I'm not sure what the solution is, so, I'm just hoping the clerk would have...
That was the motion that we entertained, but Mr. Clerk, have you got any comments to make?
Well, my comments echo what Counsel Ianone said. I mean, once you bring all of council into the committee as a, you know, as a committee per se, then you've got to advertise, put it on our website, you know, it opens a whole another can of worms, and I mean, I talked about this when the proposal for the Downtown Steering Committee was that you'd all be involved. Scheduling-wise, it's difficult for all of you, let alone then throwing doctors into the equation. I would suggest two things. Number one, the council keep, that the council members on the committee keep the other council members apprised, which I think has been done, but you may want to do that in a more formal manner. You know, if you're having a meeting and you want the other council members to observe, I guess that might be fine, but the pitfall of that is, I know it's difficult for council members to just sit and observe and not provide input on an issue. I'm not trying to be facetious on this, but, you know, obviously, that poses difficulty. So, you know, I think you continue with what you're doing now. If there's opportunities to bring other councillor members in, as far as information, I think, you know, you encourage that, but I would suggest that you continue with what you've done so far.
Counsel Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I've come back to this council a number of times and said, do you have a problem with the mandate of the HIP committee and the direction that we were going? And there is never a lack of a councillor, if I can't make it, Counselor Thompson or Counselor Diodati is chairing that meeting. Counselor Diodati said we go on two days' notice, half the time we're going on the fly because we work on the doctor's schedule, sometimes lunchtime, but it wasn't the formal public structure, and I thought that's why we work so fluidly. It is very fluid. So, I'm asking council, if you had a complaint on the way we were doing it, please let us know. If not, I'd like to re-entertain a motion that says that the HIP committee stays as it was, and we will, if I can utilize perhaps our clerk secretary to, we'll do a formalized minutes and have that sent out to the council, so the council's kept updated through the clerk's office, if that's okay with council.
Any comments or questions from council? Okay.
A motion to amend, so it's the original HIP committee.
Motion to amend to the original HIP committee, seconded by Counsel Maves.
Yeah, we're allowed, we're allowed four people in the committee without crossing the line, is that right? Because Counsel Peter Angelo has expressed an interest in being on the committee, I wondered if we'd have any problem amending to include him.
We actually need a...
What's that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem adding it, I do not want to get into where our hands are tied, so we're an official committee of council.
Counsel, you've heard the amendment as well, any further comments or questions? Okay, having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Yes, Counsel Cario?
Other new business?
Yes.
Your Worship, I'd like to get a report back to this council on the costs of the arena to date, specifically, specifically looking for costs pertaining to site preparation, cleanup. I was approached by a group that had asked me why in particular we had chosen that site, and I had said, because of the Brownfield redevelopment, and that it was a free site, and they had said to me, it's far from free, ask for a report on how much money you've spent to date cleaning the site, prepping the site, getting it ready before you even start construction. The council might get a shock on how much money we've spent on the site prior to construction. So, I'd like to get a report back on the money we've spent to date, specifically on what I've asked, site preparation.
Motion by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Fisher? Okay, you heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Yes, Counsel Diodati?
Yes, Your Worship, I know you made mention earlier of Rudy Hoffman's nomination. I'd like to make a motion, Your Worship, that we put a link, a direct link, on the city's website for the next week leading up to the vote. I think it's important, I think Rudy's been an incredible corporate citizen.
He has.
And as well, I think it brings great notoriety to Niagara Falls if we can get him the recognition I think he deserves.
I think that's a very fitting recommendation, you know, this matter will be dealt with in Dubai. I know that Rudy will be going to Dubai, and he's being, he's competing with the likes of Mr. Sullenberger, who actually landed the plane in the Potomac, I know, sorry, in the Hudson River. And also, he has had the support of Bell Aero Systems because of his extensive work, so I know that their staff's been asked to support him as well, but it would be great and fitting to do that. So, we have a move here by Counsel Diodati, seconded by Counsel Ianone. Again, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I just wanted to remind the public that there's one more